So as far as our quarterly, we had 203 911 calls, eight motor vehicle accident reports, 21 citations, 26 cases, two felony cases. We had pre-trial court, 394th District Court on July 12 with Chris Estrada sentencing. August, we had 182 911 calls, we had five motor vehicle accident reports, 45 citations, 25 cases, three felony cases, one illegal immigration case referred to customs border protection. And September, we had 140 911 calls, 11 motor vehicle accidents, 38 citations, and 33 cases with four felony cases. And one of the things we're going to be talking about later on is loud music abatement. July, we had seven calls, three, I know everybody's interested in the Crystal Bar's music, so I included those. Three came from the old Crystal Bar. August, we had 12 loud music calls, four from the Crystal. September, we had 13 calls and one from the Crystal. Most complaints are in reference to house music, and so it's neighbors complaining on neighbors, or I think we had during the Catholic Church, we had one complaint on the Catholic Church. So I told Father Beto, turn it now, Father Beto. But for the most part, it's house music that we have complaints with. So one of the complaints that I think some of y'all may have seen the complaint is that we have no loud music ordinance. We do have a, we call it a boombox, but it's intended for motor vehicles with the music up loud. And so we don't have an actual ordinance for house music or businesses. We do use the Texas, we can use the Texas Penal Code 4207. The only requirement on that one is it has to have an 85 decibel reading, and it's very hard to, you know, to have that reach that, 85 decimals is pretty loud, but according to the law, that's what it is, and most places don't reach that 85 decimals. I think the best thing to do is to create ordinance that can answer this, maybe a time restriction, and so that might be the best way to look at that. So upcoming events, we have the, here tomorrow, we have the Family Crisis Center of the Big Ben Annual Candlelight vigil in March. That's tomorrow, starts at 6:30. We have a Special Olympics torch run event on November 16th. Along with that, we have the Military Veterans and Law Enforcement Appreciation at Soros State University football game, and we'll be providing color guard. Last year, it was just coordinated with the Alpine Police Department as color guard. This year, it's going to be a mix of agencies, Sheriff's Office, PD, UDPS, and maybe some others.
And then pumpkin patch.
Okay, yes, all right. So one of the things that I wanted to mention is, that I forgot to put on the slides, is come the end of October, we have the Red Ribbon Week, and that's from October 23rd to October 31st. And we also have the Halloween Safety. Those are programs that we do, we go to the campuses and we talk to them about, don't do drugs, and be careful on your costumes and stuff like that. So recently, the new elementary school principal called me and he goes, he asked me, he goes, Darryl, what's your feeling about the trips to Canoza? And I was being honest with him, I said, I avoid Canoza now. If I had to go to Villanueva, I'll go through an Imperial crane and that way, I'll completely avoid Canoza. It's dangerous. And so I told my wife that, that her boss called me and asked me these questions, and the following day, he contacted the staff and told them, no blessings, we'll be going to Canoza. So my wife played me. And so I contacted Cynthia and Eric, and so we've been making a plan. So far, we decided to work on putting our own pumpkin patch together. And so I've talked to Quarters, Quarters is very wanting to sponsor this, and so they're going to be providing, I'm looking at at least 500 pumpkins. And I've talked to Justin with UpWES, and he's willing to help out with any way to provide us some hay. So what I'm thinking about is also contacting the university about providing some of their athletes for different events around the park. And so we're going to make our own pumpkin patch, our own maze, and make it our own. And so we're looking at October 24th, talked to the principal earlier, and he likes that day. And so we're going to partner with that and make this part of the Red Ribbon Week, and it's going to be a good event. And so we have a good community-wide event. I contacted the elementary school, the Christian school, need to reach out to the Montessori and to the homeschool kids, and make sure that everybody is a part of this, and comes, come enjoy the pumpkin patch in Alpine.
Where's it going to be?
We're looking at Coconut Park. So we're excited about this, and so hopefully it goes off well. So Alpine Police Department's hiring, we currently, currently our position is open for police officers. We're three officers short right now, and so I'm looking for help. And so back to tomorrow, I really push our community, one of the, I call them a multidisciplinary team. So on our team is, one of our closest partnerships is with the Family Crisis Center of the Big Ben. We answer their phone calls, we respond, we call on them, they respond and assist us. So we have a good working relationship with the Family Crisis Center of the Big Ben. Dylan McDonough and Gina, they're always quick to, they're always quick in responding and helping us out, and so I love being a part of it. We've been doing this probably as long as I've been working, and so I love being a part with the Crisis Center. So tomorrow at 6:30, we're going to be there. We'll be marching from the Soros University Library to the Courthouse gazebo, and I wish to see everybody there. All right, y'all have any questions for me?
You do all of that with 11 officers?
We're short right now.
That is awesome.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
That is awesome.
Yeah, you know, I just comment, that's probably the best report I've seen since I'm counsel.
Appreciate that, sir, thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
Doctor May, Stevens.
Sir, thanks Mayor. So just following up on Darryl's discussion, and thanks for that information, Darryl, on the noise and other issues. I've gotten some calls from the Crystal Bar, particularly on Friday and Saturday, and I'll have to get out my decimal meter, but it's probably 85 decimals for my house. You can hear it too, yeah, it's just unbelievable. So I did some research in Darryl's comment, yeah, we have boombox ordinance that says if you can hear the boombox from the car 50 feet away, it's probably too loud. The other one is we have a loud vehicle noises, but there's nothing dealing with loud noises from homeschool businesses. And they've been going up until 2:00. So what I wanted to do is just put on the table, I think it's worthwhile, and I have to look at Darryl to come up with the draft, ordinance to go back to council, but I just want to get some sense, would you all agree that makes sense to go do?
Yeah, because I'm sure, you're right, because at 2:00 in the morning, I can still hear.
Oh my gosh, yeah. And I hate to see the homes that are that close to them. Do you were going to go talk to them, or what was the outcome in there?
Darryl, why'd you talk to them?
Oh, you did, so what was the outcome of that, Darryl?
Her attitude is, she's upset that they built it. I think it's become a column for them as well. But they, again, the owner lives in El Paso, and she depends on her manager to take care of this, and so she's very receptive, and she's willing to work with us anyway. But her not being here, I think is part of the problem, she can't see it firsthand. But we'll get this going. I also met with Ned Allen, and I can understand a lot of the community, I know my parents, they like sleeping with their windows up, and I think that's one of the wonderful luxuries we have of living in Alpine, Texas, is sleeping with your windows open and enjoying that cool breeze going through the windows. But it can cause problems. So, yeah, we'll address it, and then I'll look at other ordinances, other communities, and see what we can figure out, and then, and the time restriction, I think that's probably our best bet.
So is San Fernando this one?
City of El Paso.
Rod, if you remember Seth Sorensen said that Killmore accidents have gone through some, so they do have a, an ordinance that they're going to have to, you know.
Although, I do think that is, I mean, the Crystal's early, you people are just wanting to get all the places over, or we know around somewhere else doing something that we should be doing.
So I think part of the problem too is the logo isn't open as often to keep the college kids entertained, and so the college crowd ends up going to the Crystal, and I don't know if they influence the people to turn the music up loud in the back, because most of the time, it's not a band, but it's going to be like a DJ.
Yeah, I was just wanting to mention that, you know, I was born and raised in Fort Davis, an area we call central, or we're more about that, and we grew up with music every day. Somebody, some neighbor had music, both in Spanish, and as that music went down, another neighbor would turn on their radio or record player and so forth. And to us, it was a meaning that the audio was alive and well. Coming to Alpine, I noticed where we live, we have a few neighbors that do the same thing, and it's great. Sometimes they spend beyond 12.
You've got two neighbors right there.
Up to 11 and 12 o'clock, I think it's okay, but when you want to 2:00 or 3:00 in the morning, that's pretty extreme.
You know, my back porch faces east towards A Mountain, and everything from town I can hear clear and birds, and so I totally understand. And Alpine's a beautiful place, and being outside is just awesome, and I can count the stars, it's beautiful. And so, yeah, I think the time restriction will definitely take care of it.
Thank you, sir. Next.
Well, I've got, we're going to talk about transportation a little later on, too, so we'll just stretch a little bit.
So next item is the assessment. So Darryl, you going to come back up?
Yes, sir.
On speed limit change from Diego. Do the council rest of the, that's the point.
I'm sorry? Yes, sir. That's right. So after my assessment, and I'll read my memorandum verbatim. The purpose of my memorandum is to provide a recommendation or reference to the proposed speed limit change from 20 miles per hour zone to 30 mile per hour requested by Ward Ford Councilperson Lucy Escobedo. I have assessed Diego Avenue from First Street to Fifth Street, I have monitored the traffic on and off duty. I determined that the average vehicle is traveling 26 miles per hour. I further monitored the traffic from Fifth to Seventh Street, and did not see much difference in the speed. Understanding that persons traveling on a road, on any road, have a tendency of driving faster than the posted speed limit, I can only assume that if the speed is raised from 20 mile per hour to 30 mile per hour, the vehicles will be traveling slightly faster than the posted 35 mile per hour. I have observed that persons driving on Diego Avenue do slow down due to any activity of the Catholic Church. Upon my assessment, I would recommend that the speed limit be raised 30 mile per hour on Diego Avenue from First Street to Seventh Street. And again, if there's mass going on, or if there's some type of class at the Catholic School, the traffic slows down, and it's pretty obvious. And I think the main, of course, the road goes from Fifth to First Street, and so if you change that, I think you might as well just change it to always seven. It would be pointless just to do two blocks.
Well, thank you.
You're welcome.
City Manager.
Right. Writing an update on the three transportation studies underway at state level, potentially impact Alpine. Many here have attended or been part of a significant amount of the different studies, Highway 67, Highway 92. We also know that more large level traffic, whether it's the movement of homes with large trucking traffic, and certainly, as we sit in some of these different meetings, whether they're hosted here in Alpine or North or City of El Paso, we've got to really think about how do we stay in front of this community. There certainly has been discussion that's postulated up over even my previous mayor, city manager, about, you know, bypass, you know, truck traffic is too high. And really, tonight was more of an opportunity to have some open discussion as a council, relative to thoughts and opinions on that, and how do we start positioning ourselves to handle some of these longer-term solutions as they, you know, as that traffic is going to impact Alpine. Council Stevens has done some research on it as well.
Yeah, my sense, and I'm glad Eric included the chart of the Presidio Regional Freight Mobility Plan, and Eric mentioned, we're all on 6790, which is more of a safety. We know that some of the elements that came out of that, from an Alpine perspective, additional truck traffic challenges and pedestrian safety, that our roads are going to get busier than we would all want. And so that gives us all positive concern. I recall when Chris Webber was in here talking to us before, I think we were over in the Civic Center, some of the intersections we have, particularly at Highway 18, any border crosses, East Avenue and Holland, they had like different strategies that would take it from a grade of F to a super good grade across up to a D, and I recall talking to Chris, Chris, well, from an F to a D is never a good score, he'd be able to get up to As. So that study, as you look at the chart we have in front of us, that study will be complete in the summer of 2019, so later this year, as we all recall, there's no money associated with it, it's going to be a set of recommendations. Two weeks ago, the Presidio Regional Freight Mobility Plan, they had a meeting down in Presidio, a meeting here in the next band Alpine, well-attended on both counts, which is a study looking at what's going on from a multimodal perspective, so trucks, trains, cars, they've even got air transportation, what does that look like? That study's going to be complete September, or the summer of this next year. What I thought was really interesting about it is the folks from, why am I forgetting the name of the railroad in Texas? No, what's the name of it?
Ferro Max.
I'm sorry.
Ferro Max.
No, they're the owner, the next one down.
Texas Pacifico.
Thanks, Texas Pacifico, I don't think I complained up there. So Texas Pacifico says, they're running about 40,000 cars this year. They expect in 2020 to be running 50,000 cars, and as soon as the bridge opens up down south, which will occur about a year from now, then the following year, they expect they're going to be running about 170,000 cars per year. And 170,000 cars, of course going from Mexico all the way across the bridge, up through Alpine, up through San Angelo, and on from there. 170,000 cars, there's going to be six more trains through Alpine. And so you're going to see major upgrades on the rail that Texas Pacifico owns, and in my view, we want to be in front of this, so we don't end up with another six trains towards Blas, and crossing El Rio, and crossing 118. And in my view, this is an opportunity for us to start our quiet zone activity, working Texas Pacifico, and then start working back into what goes on from a UP standpoint, I've got lots more thoughts on that, but I don't want to go through all the details here. In addition, there's another study underway, and that is the Texas-Mexico Border Transportation Study, which is a significant all the way to El Paso, all the way to down south, and the implication for that, which will be done, you know, 15 months from now. In my view, all of those impact Alpine in one way or another. I think it's time that we as a community start putting together, for lack of a better term, a transportation vision plan that starts taking into account all of those elements, and what we as a community can invoke to ensure the safety, the culture and quietness of Alpine remain, at the same time supporting business and transportation. So thinking about, this quiet zone is an example on the Texas Pacifico route, thinking about how we as a community want to consider whether or not we invoke the ETJ that we have, the one-mile boundary around Alpine, our 4.6 miles, but moving out beyond that to be able to talk about zoning, because we certainly as a community have the ability, by Texas law, to impact what planning and zoning to go outside within a one-mile radius to have the right impact on what would go in around us, particularly if you think about, would we or would we not be supportive of having a route go around Alpine, particularly for the trucks, but at the same time, recognize that we can limit the amount which is industrial, the amount which is residential, so we don't have a big industrial buildup outside, because in my opinion, we're still trying to bring cars through Alpine, we just want the trucks to go around the other way, and so how do we go figure that out? I don't propose to have any solutions, although I thought a fair amount about it, but I think it's time we as a council and with Eric, think about a strategy, in a very deliberate process, to start laying out our plans towards going to, for lack of a better term, the Alpine Transportation Master Plan that meets our needs, and thinking about what actions we should take. I think as part of it, we all need to get ourselves educated on what's going on with the outcome for these plans. We've already influenced what's going to happen on the 6790 border. I think the border crossing on the train is another one to work, and then we're going to have to stay engaged with the others. And I think we're going to have to probably ask Eric to take the lead, think about what that might work like, and then we're going to have to, as we get smart about it, start pulling in community members to get their feedback, because while many, Secretary talked earlier, a huge crowd's coming to talk about 6790, unless we're talking about bypassing of those kind of streets, I'm not sure we're going to get much input from the community. But I think it's our responsibility to be thinking, not five years down the road, we need to be thinking 10, 15, 20 years down the road, so that's why the reason I think is what we're probably talking about. And I think we are probably going to need, over the next year and a half, almost some quarterly workshops among the council and invite community representatives in, so we can not only educate them, get their perspective, whether they're businesses or residents, as we start lining up the planes. So that was kind of this bigger picture, I think it's time to start addressing it. So those are my thoughts, and I know Mayor, you've been involved in some of the discussions, but.
Council Stevens, I've been pretty heavily involved with TechStop on all of these projects, and also with some major studies going on in Pecos, Texas, the US 205. And Mexico's the number one trading partner for Texas, and the number one trading partner for the United States, and its growth is increasing, Presidio's going to grow into a major port.
They are, yep.
TechStop cannot build more ports and more freeways than we're ready with El Paso. So they're going to increase the lesser used ports, and Presidio's going to look at it. There's 1.7 million vehicles right now that cross between Presidio and El Paso, and that's probably going to double in five years. And almost all of those vehicles come through, because almost all that traffic is really going from this amendment to Presidio, maybe else. The way TechStop works, they work on this long-term planning, the license, and if we want to keep the trucks out of downtown Alpine, make Alpine a tourist destination without the trucks nonstop coming through downtown Alpine like they do through Pecos, Alpine has to take the lead to have a truck bypass, because TechStop does not plan local bypasses. You know, obviously, that they don't do. Unless the local communities, cities, and counties do it, it won't happen. If Alpine took the lead and said, we want to have a truck bypass, a truck only bypass, Alpine might be able to get TechStop to put it into the US 6790 border master plan.
I don't think it's going to be in the 6790, they already have that discussion, it's already out of the picture.
That was withdrawn from the master plan, the last meeting I attended, it was not in there.
Which is why we wanted this one, the Volvitaly Transportation Study.
There was some opposition on that when we were doing our studies, a lot of good opposition on it.
It doesn't take, taking trucks out of downtown, just like around Andrews or Monahams, it's a truck only 290 road, that doesn't, you find a truck that goes through Alpine, but nobody else wants to.
No, don't get me wrong, I mean, I'm for it, because it should be an alternative bypass, and I feel that we should start addressing it. Now, it was addressed years ago, and it was shot down, but I think as we're moving into the future, especially the future of Alpine, all our tourists come down here to see a quaint West Texas town, and we start seeing all these trucks rushing through here, you know, you're going to lose that spirit of the city.
If they're going to address it now, means in five or 10 years, we could be like Pecos is today, with bumper to bumper semi's coming through.
That's where we put it. Right, and I agree with you, sir, that we need to start looking at it right now, we also need to address on the railroad, how to abate some of that noise, and we can do it right now, get ahead of the ballgame, and even with quad arms on, at two locations, you can minimize that horns.
So even, you don't even need quad arms to abate the noise, so long as you got a barrier, or say one on each side will work.
Right, if the roads are wide enough.
Yep, and over here they are, Del Rio is.
Yeah, Del Rio is.
In my view, we also have the opportunity to work on four of the five processes, our left buoy is at Fifth Street, that's the big issue.
Yeah, no, we need to start addressing it right now, because it's gotten away from the city, and, you know, look what we're at now, right now, that's the biggest complaint I hear from a lot of folks, is the train noise, and also, once in a while, I hear about the truck traffic. It's not heavy at all right now, but we need to look in the future, 30, 40 years from now, you know, and versus the cost today, versus, you know, a few years down the road. And, you know, people give me, they tell me that, well, your tourists are going to go around, not necessarily, because people, if this is their destination, they're not going to circumvent us, they're going to come here. circumvent us, they're going to come here regardless. Very few will actually get on the alternative route. You know, they see the heavy trucks there, now that's a truck route, well, stat, it will come through Alpine. So I don't think that, uh, that will hold any water, you know, to a certain extent. Uh, so yes, we need to address it right now, and we're in a great position to start looking at it.
If I can put in my two cents on this. Uh, it's really amazing, but this bigger picture that Council Stevens was talking about, is that was actually talked about ten, fifteen years ago. And a lot of the emphasis, to be honest, was coming from Mexico. Because they knew their emphasis was pointing north, and to extend trade with the United States. And they were looking at this corridor as one of the principal accessways. And it's happening now. Uh, one interesting thing, and regardless of the challenges that are coming in the future of all of us, that one and biggest we're going to have is to get to educate people to accept change. That's one of the things that, uh, was really stressed at the PML conference, is how do we get our communities to become involved for the changes that is coming? And we need to start thinking about that.
And that's, you know, why, why Tech dot engages the community along this route to be a thorough means also, so they don't feel like they're being let by and stepped on. And I think we as a city should do the same thing, like Council leaders, is really educate our community as to the possibilities if we don't act now.
What would happen?
Yeah, what would happen? Uh, yeah, we looked at, really, the only alternative site we looked at was going behind eight-mound and coming around on the backside. You know, otherwise, you'd have to go through Sunny Glen and then cut across through the airport and all that, and build a whole new road there. You know, and it'd be a longer...
Big challenge would be zero, right?
Yes.
So I asked this morning, three or two weeks ago, to start, you know, pulling together the sheriff's vaccine data on volumes. Because in my view, vaccine data will a long ways towards what we're saying. Given the infrastructure we have today, with the growth that they expect, what's going to be the impact on our infrastructure? With that, I think we have a compelling story to now start sharing with. Now we have a problem, we've got to address it. That's part of it, you've got to help people identify there's a real problem coming, and then we're going to engage in potential solutions, and I think the minds start opening.
And I think that was discussed at our first meeting, I attended, that they were going to give the data, so we could present it to the residents of the area.
And another area that we need to also focus on is not only getting people to accept change, but also to educate about the potential opportunities.
Economic development.
And that's difficult. Because I was gone twenty years, and I came back, and they were still doing what, when I left twenty years ago, they're just not okay with change.
Yeah, I'd say that's the way it is, that's what it's going to be, but we've got to educate the change that mentality.
And our challenge is, we don't have a course here.
That's it.
Our biggest challenge for economic, we do not have a course. And so, and that's important, different cultural thing. So bottom line, it sounds like we're all in agreement. Uh, I think Eric, if you can hopefully now help you think about, we ought to bring probably Chris in, and make sure we're all up to speed on our game plan and get educated for our wonderful.
And at the same time, the residents are starting thinking about it too. Uh, spread the word, we need help.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Oh, that's fine, from the tourist perspective, one, uh, one thing's absolutely correct, the US sixty-seven corridor plan does not include anything on bypasses, but what we were told at the intermodal freight plan meeting was that that plan will include, like, a white paper roadmap for local governments to follow that will tell us the steps that need to be taken in order to initiate that bypass plan. And, uh, I think the most important, some of the most important words at Rogers said were trucks only, and that's, uh, obviously the biggest fear for our local business people, is that the tourists won't, will take the, will take the bypass, which we've already discussed. When I brought that up to Chris Weber a couple of years ago, and mentioned Monahans, one, and asked him, "Well, how is that working, is that successful?" And he pointed out that one of the things about that particular bypass that makes it very effective is that it's inconvenient. And so that's something that we might consider, is that when we're looking at a bypass intended for freight only, if we, if we make it a little more out of the way, then every little thing we can add to subtly make, uh, our main street more attractive for, for tourist traffic, and then flyer and freight traffic more around.
Yeah, I think anybody that's driven through Roswell, New Mexico, and taken that bypass, that is super inconvenient. If you're, if you're a trucker, yeah, I mean, it makes sense, but if you're, if you're in your car, there's no place to stop, it's terrible.
Well, and that's why you want to impact zoning.
Exactly.
We need to determine the zoning about what can be built around that area. If we say you can't build anything around there, who's going to go along that route and say this is...
That is, that is critical, actually, because they absolutely don't want to...
The sixty-seven study was, what if all of a sudden gas stations start, convenience starts to start juggling along the route?
So we take them out.
We have to eliminate that.
Which is why we have to take action off of the ETJ.
And the one other thing I wanted to mention to you all, from the tourist perspective, about the rail line, the Transpacifico rail line, um, we, what I was hearing from the intermodal meeting, uh, that we're, we're seeing a lot, we'll see a lot of impact on Alpine without the, quite the same, because most of that traffic's coming through, we might find some economic benefits, but a lot of it's going to be impact on Alpine. One of the things, uh, we might have some leverage then on the railway as they're upgrading the line, and one thing I just want to lay out to you as an idea that has been brought up in the Parks Plan, uh, the Parks Master Plan we just finished, is the idea of hike and bike trails along that rail right-of-way, which is an absolute no-go with Union Pacific, but that line is, is managed by Tech dot, and they have a lot more opportunity for flexibility. So one thing I just want to raise the idea, if there's a safety barrier between the rail and the trail, that we have an opportunity for connectivity for bikes and hiking all the way down Presidio, all the way up to San Angelo, and something like that would be a real tourist asset, as well as a quality of life asset. So I just want to put that on your plate, as you're thinking.
And that's been brought up several times, this whole studies, and they showed us a video in Oregon where it paralleled the railroad, but there was a brick wall.
Exactly.
Beautiful scenery, and then the bikers going up and down that trail, you know, real safe and all that.
Yeah, and we already know Union Pacific has said flat, hard, no on that idea, but Tech dot has not, so it's a thought. Thank you.
Really, no, sir? Any more? Okay. Yeah. Uh, is the meeting day for December one? Um, by charter, we have one meeting in December. Our meeting rules and procedures, which are included in the packet, talked about that meeting in December being the first, uh, the first meeting not, not the thirteenth. I want to say it was twenty fifteen, uh, when Molly Taylor was still here, we had actually created a resolution that said, if that first meeting, so that first Tuesday in December follows Thanksgiving, that we would actually have the meeting on the second Tuesday.
The tenth.
The tenth. And so the reason for that was, uh, because city offices is closed Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, typically the art walk is the weekend before Thanksgiving, so, uh, not much really gets inserted into that, that agenda. This year in particular, it's even more concerning, because that first meeting in January isn't until like the fifth or sixth, so we've got quite a lot of time. I know sometimes it impacts schedule, so wanted to make sure we got that out there. Uh, don't know, I think Council Stevens, sometimes it would impact, uh, your schedule.
Uh, I've already made plans, but I...
For today?
So Tuesday, Tuesday.
Okay. No, we did, we passed the resolution back in twenty fifteen, but I, my preference is to bring it up every year, because want to make sure we're clear on it and it works for everybody's schedule.
It's fine with me, I have plans later.
Okay, we're cool.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move to, uh, you want to get this deep?
Yeah, so maybe next time, it'll be the annual calendar, we can remember that, so we don't find ourselves in this situation, so. Uh, the next one, as you recall on our last reading, we talked about boards and commissions. Uh, I've not had a chance, I'm worried you're going to have the annual prize report, do you have any feedback for that?
We kind of went around in a circle, all the way around it came back to, you say that maybe the way it's set up is a good way to have it set up.
Okay.
If we include some of the changes that we talked about for people who can be on the board, but when we came back around, I mean, it just seems like it really is set up in the best way, even having Jennifer, um, there as a non-voting participant, I, we kind of came back around that that's probably for the best also, after we talked about it for a while. Um, but we, we spent a good, a good hour and a half talking about different things that we could do to make it easier and who, you know, but it really seems like, at least for the discussion that we had for, for, you know, a couple of weeks ago, is that's, it's, that's the best way, is how it's been set up.
Okay, so what I'll do is, I'll, based on that input, I'll proceed, put together draft organs for, bring it back to council, and what we talked about, the changes we talked about at the last meeting, to incorporate in there possibly. The only other item that I want to mention, including your handout, we talked about, putting a advisory board and commission questionnaire together. Cynthia Grabble, and I wasn't actually about stealing other people's good ideas, but made it specifically for Alpine. Uh, I don't know if you've got a chance to look at it or not, but does this make sense as a questionnaire about the people, and it's more about trying to help them understand, hey, getting name information as well, we have a problem with that, but also more specifically their background and why they wish to serve, so they'll be in a good background, so if that makes sense. And I think it allows all of us to kind of put the pressure on the table in a way that is, here we're just gathering information, what do you want to be on?
This was something we talked about too.
Yes.
That was something that they brought up on their own, saying, "Why can't we do that?" So...
Good idea, man.
Okay, good.
A couple of points in form of comment. Um, and updating the city ordinance to approve city board. One thing maybe for you to consider, right, Council Stevens, is training also for the, the chairs of each of these advisory boards, and the field search committee, because I think, I think they need that in its order. Um, and at the same time, maybe those that are in the leadership, uh, position can maybe see if they can go out there and look for other representatives in the city, the other fifty-one percent, which are Hispanic and non, and other minorities, to get them to participate.
I don't know how to put that into the orbits.
No, no, I'm not saying it's part of training.
Training, certainly, again, and we have annual training, but obviously that is part of the orbits, that we just codify that from a training perspective. So I'll have on that, so next I'll bring back the draft for this, and I will all six boards and commissions in the same board.
Very good. We have a new one, Chris and I were working on for the...
So that'll be number seven.
Number seven.
Very good. Yes, sir.
Come back to seventy.
I'm, the questionnaire, what's his occupation, what do you, your retirement?
Retired, I can ask that question all the time, retired, ah. What I also thought on there, with the note about, uh, if they're involved with the city or have been before, that was a good way to guess, was just to make sure we're managing any...
Do you have anything to say about volunteering, like, whether...
I don't recall that having, uh, certainly...
I think it was on the second one, I suppose. I don't even know if that's even...
Okay, I can work that.
So are they volunteering, anything else?
Yeah, it's a question about where you go along the line, because that's my life, that's all I know, so, yeah, that's fine.
Anything else?
Hello?
Okay, let's move on then. Number nine, action items to be accompanied by previous statement effects, including where fronts are coming from, if applicable. Action items are limited to up to ten per meeting, citizens are allowed to comment, limited to three minutes after being called upon by the mayor or mayor's pro temp. Citizens are required to state their names, and the ward includes a desired priority given to citizens of Alpine and those who live, who live, and those who own business or property in the city. Individuals who do not live in or own business or property in the city limits of Alpine will be allowed to speak if there's time available, and city manager.
Mayor, we can come back to seventy, come back to seventy.
Seventy? Oh, yeah, that's right, seventy, the one you pulled out?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So if I might, I'll propose the motion to approve, uh, make continuing service the city representative of Brewster County appraisal district for, for the city of Alpine.
Okay, is there a second?
No.
Okay, well, somebody can second.
Now, without response. So what is it? Okay, the Brewster County Assessment District Ward is established by the state, includes the seven taxing entities within Brewster County. Uh, and, uh, the Assessment District has actually, decades ago, modified its plan that says there'll be a representative from every taxing entity on the board. We provide oversight to ensure that all of the property taxing, ad valorem taxes meet the state requirements for the auditor, uh, which is Denise Flores and her staff of seven people. So they go out and do all the assessments across all of Brewster County, and that, that gets fed into all the properties for which, Tlinga, Marathon ISD, uh, Alpine ISD, Brewster County, Alpine, the hospital district, and I'm missing one of them. Oh, thank you, ASD, yeah, so, well, there's representatives from all of them. Uh, and I was selected two years ago to be the city's representative on that, back to the meeting today. So we meet the third Tuesday of every month at eleven o'clock. It's a new dish like this, it's a public forum, we have a call in Texas, so it's that. The city actually pays in about sixty-six thousand dollars a year to pay our portion of the appraisers, so they will come up with the property values. Uh, and we have a detailed plan, and we get honored by the state, and we have a whole bunch that are not of length, but random, through from the Barrerwood Commission, except ours is by the State Attorney General for a firm called Madison, Albany, Albany. So I'm the city representative, and I currently am the chair.
I guess in that chair is basically, to, the group is assesses property values?
We don't assess, we provide oversight to ensure that we have a tax assessor who's properly trained and qualified, and a staff that goes along with that to do that. So you did, you got your property tax bill not too long ago, right? So Denise and her team are the ones that put all that together. That information then goes to D. Joe Wigg, who sends out the tax bill. They all have to be certified to be certified tax assessors, and we provide the oversight to make sure that they do all of that, and that we manage the budget and all the rules associated with it.
Well, let's hear it.
Yeah, so, we meet once a month, uh, and when the time is right, we give an update on where that stands online, because I have that all... that stands on my, about that, all the budgets and all that stuff.
Good luck.
Yeah, no, it's, it's an interesting role, it works very well, and without wanting too much detail, I would tell you it's, we're doing exactly what we're supposed to do. And as you might have recalled, about when we put our budget together for the Brewster County Assessment District, we went from fiscal year being the same as we are, one October 30, September, we changed it to January 1st, so we had to put in a five-quarter budget, but we had enough reserve, we didn't charge any of the taxing entities for that quarter that took out of reserve. So Alpine still paid a year's worth, it's close to $15,000. So it's sort of, it's pretty light on line, and checking out balances of today was $266,000. So if you think about it.
Any more discussion? Anybody? Okay, most have been made, seconded. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those who signed, motion carries. So now we'll go to city manager.
We'll discuss, consider taking appropriate action on the second final reading of ordinance 2019-10-01, the ordinance of the city of Alpine, Texas, establishing a school zone adjacent. The Alpine High School along State Highway 18 and State Highway 223, establishing the speed limit in the school zone at 15 miles per hour while beacons are flashing, authorizing traffic control signs to be installed, establishing a fine for violation of this ordinance.
Any more?
Move that we consider to take appropriate action to, I think that, I need to read the whole thing that he just read. Okay. Move that we can discuss, consider and take appropriate action on the second final reading of ordinance 2019-10-01, an ordinance of the city of Alpine, Texas, establishing a school zone adjacent to the high school, Alpine High School, along State Highway 118 and State Highway 223, establishing the speed limit in the school zone at 15 miles per hour while beacons are flashing, authorizing traffic control signs to be installed, and establishing a fine for the violation of this ordinance.
Is there a second? Second? Any questions?
So I have gotten a fair amount of pushback on this, which primarily because the question was asked, having we had any accidents or any endangerment going on. I know, Darryl, you've done a lot of that's a homework on that, I thought, so I thought I would go.
On the request of Councilman Stevens, I did some research as far as the school zone around the high school, and we have had, this year, I did locate two accidents that did happen in an area none relating to the school zone. One, there was a deer in the road, and a person deered and hit a pole, a stop sign.
That's because somebody beat him.
And then the other one, the other one was just a person driving without attention and side-swapped another vehicle. The, we complete our accident reports, and it's called Chris Crash, it's Crash Report Information System, and that's through TechStop. And there's a way that I can query a location, I can pinpoint it on a map and square it off, and I tell them, all right, I want all the accident, all the accident reports that occurred here. Unfortunately, their system's down, and so the only ones, I had to actually manually look for these reports here, and that's the only ones for this year. And so I couldn't collect all the, all the data that I wanted to, unfortunately. I don't see much, I don't see a lot of accidents happen there. I think the reason that we don't see the accidents there is because people drive, because they know the possibility is, they're driving defensively, basically. And the way the school has the exit, they have the school, these high school kids, and, and these parents, everybody's just driving aggressively, but driving defensively. And so I think that, that is the reason why we don't have accidents there. It has a strong possibility of being a major, major accident there. I believe that the school zone there is needed. And having those lights there is going to be a good safe, it's going to make the school safe, it's going to make the school, the staff and the students safe. And so it's going to slow down those cars. The speed limit there is 35 miles per hour, and for a person trying to exit the, exit the parking lot there at the high school, it's, it's dangerous. And so dropping it down to 15, you're going to have a lot of angry people, but I think it's something that's going to, it's needed.
I agree, we should look at it proactive.
Yes, sir.
There's always a potential for an accident, so it's a doubt of you there.
Considering in Alpine, we've had, from, since I've been working here, in downtown street, or not downtown street, areas, we've had four rollovers, that's a strong possibility there with a turn, with a turning lane, and, yeah, they could be really bad.
I've got a question on that. Well, if the ordinance is passed, will TechStop, if the state highway put up the signage? Oh, they're the ones that ask.
Yeah.
Any more discussion? Yeah, hey, Chris.
Referring to Chris, that's good.
So any more discussion?
And where's it going to be around? Just around the school?
Uh, yes, on 225, on 223, Loop Road, and then on the main 118.
I try to remember.
So a lot of times what I'll do is, is, again, just for, just deterrence, I'll park right there in front of the, the high school as the cars are exiting, and cars are turning. For one, the, the traffic on 118 will slow down because they see, and the other, the students and the parents won't be as eager to drive out of the parking lot with no discretion.
I mean, our, our high school is one of the few places that you go across the state and don't see a flash.
Definitely.
Most now have migrated to.
All the schools and parks have flashing yellow lights, schools are.
All the time.
They, she directs traffic?
Oh, the, I'm sorry, the school resource? No, they don't do any. Yeah. The sheriff wants them in the schools, and so he leaves the school zones for us. Yeah, you won't find the sheriff's office following buses or working in school.
The only thing I would ask, and maybe argue in close with Chris on this, is after the zone, if the 35 mile an hour sign can open up. My experience has been, because I come out of the airport a lot, and people slow down, and they will stay 15 all the way down the road. And so that's something that we want to make sure.
End school zone.
Yes, and end school zone. At elementary school, that's exactly what happens. So if it follows that same pattern, I think it'll work great. But I, it's amazing to me the number of people that are 15 and maybe are out budget off that, so.
Or we got on both sides. They don't want to take it. You know, the captain.
Yeah, you'll have one, the other.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, any more discussion on, seeing none, all those in favor, raise your right hand. All those who signed, motion carries. Thank you all very much. And let's go to item two.
So item number two, we all made a decision to run Eric Zimmer on as the city manager on, on early September, and we agreed on the fundamental terms of that agreement based upon what Eric shared with us at the time we interviewed and hired him that night. I know we're glad as we're working on putting a contract together that is reflected in those terms. This is very, almost identical to that contract that existed before, with one exception, and that's the term. As you recall, in previous contracts we've had, it would be a three-year term or whatever. This is consistent with the city charter, the charter says it's indefinite until such time as was the change made on either side. And everything else remains the same as we've seen before, including in section 13, which is about termination and severance pay. So I would propose that council approve the contract for the city manager, Eric Zimmer, as written effective September 3rd.
Okay, is there a second? There's two seconds.
Is there a third second?
Most of them made second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, like sign, motion carries. You've got a contract. Okay, let's go to item three, city manager.
Honorable mayor, city council, in your packet, we have, we're to discuss and consider appropriate action to approve the auction of vehicles from the city of Alpine. And we collect vehicles. As we have moved into a lease program, some of our older vehicles have been decommissioned, moved them out to 15 acre, and kind of one time we'll need to auction them off. So in your packet are a list of vehicles along with some pictures. There is a marker number listed, and so we need approval this evening to go ahead and auction these off. We would like to auction them on October 15th. Post that out.
Okay, yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move that we approve the auction of the vehicles from the city of Alpine on October 25th, the day after the pumpkin patch.
I'll second that.
Okay, most have been made second. Any discussion?
I thought it was great to see the pictures. Last night, some of your team, Eric, have swapped up a few of these vehicles. They probably found they actually still run, so I presume you're looking at all that, as we all like to do. If we can, we report to our RSPs.
Either going to the lease program, I think we, the city got really good, and we got sharper-looking vehicles and a better public image when I see those vehicles out there. So that's my two cents. You probably just don't leave us. Any more discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of auctioning them, raise your right hand, opposed, like sign, motion carries. Thank you. Item number four, city manager.
Honorable mayor, city council, last item is to discuss, consider, and take appropriate action on resolution 2019-10-07, requesting financial assistance from TechStop, ADH Division, for approvals to the Alpine Casperas, for meeting in TechStop, the authorized agent for administration of such approvals, and authorize the city manager, Texas, to execute the appropriate contracts and agreements on behalf of the city.
So Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve resolution 2019-10-07, requesting financial assistance from TechStop for the approvals of the Alpine Casperas, and in TechStop, the authorized agent for administration of such approvals, and authorize the city manager to make it all happen.
Okay, is there a second?
One second.
Okay, motion's been made, second. Any discussion?
Only one question I have. This is for the lights. What about the runway 119? Will that be a subsequent?
And those lights are slowly moving up and up several times, and they're pathetic.
Well, the key is, if they light up, you're great. If they don't light up.
Then you're in trouble.
You are in trouble.
You're going to get your bag light out.
Now you light up, it's 3 miles out. I'm lighting my lights.
Any more discussion? Seeing none, go ahead and vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, like sign, motion carries. Thank you all very much. Now we'll start with my roulette race site, city council member, comments.
Thanks for sticking around, you guys.
Can I throw a gun?
Joe, I really liked your report, thank you. We're excited about the pumpkin patch.
Well, hopefully, hopefully I can get everything going. I'll be here.
I really liked, I know Randy's not here. I don't know how he does that. That's a lot. And thank y'all for coming.
So, one, I thought the roads workshop was great, so Eric, thanks for pulling it together. Please pass along to Eddie all of the, exactly, I know we're all on December 10th, or that, maybe you should get things prioritized. I would like to like, for the portrait director, and Eric, you established a new level in your team as well, and that's all, Carol. The last comment I'd like to make is, I've gotten lots of feedback from my constituents about, who recall the lack thirteen, and doing morale, so it's all on the outside, all down in there. So the feedback I've gotten is all in the process, so thank you.
After the revision of that, I actually sent Eric some comments on that, quite a lot.
It was a great meeting, we had a lot of great discussions. Karen, you've been here since our special meeting, and thank you for that, the Zimmers. And Darryl, great report, also Randy had an excellent report. So overall, it's been a great meeting, and thank you all very much.
And I want to thank you all for listening to the questions that I ask, so thank you.
No, we have to, you pay our.
I don't want to get into all that, you know, we're all, we're all engaged.